The policy and oversight will be covered by BD Hernandez. Mr. Hernandez, please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, my name is BD Hernandez. I am with Well-Ed in Action, a community organization that works with families that have been impacted by police violence. Part of these recommendations were about what are the policies and the oversight and accountability that need to happen in order to get to the goal which is ending police violence in our communities? And so, this recommendation has been, also was part of several reports in the past, including the CPTI process that was in 2015, and a 10-year review of often-involved shootings. And so, this recommendation focuses on having clarity around de-escalation, around what is, you know, what are the policies when force is used, having clarity on use of force, making sure that there are policies and everything, including protocol around, that protects life and the sanctity of life, that there's clarity around the rules when there's pursuits, right? In terms of what are the parameters, what are, people need to do. There was also a presentation of different policies in other cities that comes with it. There's other language in cities that have done this throughout their policy. So that was, you know, the nature of this recommendation, but the goal again is to get to a point where there isn't police violence and to get to a point where all of that is clear in policy. Recommendation two comes again from other reports, including the National Police Foundation that talked about a way to improve processes, improve accountability, and transparency within the department that goes a little bit attached to what David was mentioning around community trust and engagement is stopping the purging of officers' disciplinary records, right? And that's a policy that can be changed, that allows transparency, and again, doesn't erase records in the future, but also increases other processes of accountability, like making the police union contract, and when that is negotiated, a public process, or a process where is involved. Those are some of the things that are part of this recommendation, which are aiming to create policy that improves accountability and oversight.
Thank you. Our next section is on reporting. Slide 11, and Cleo Lewis will present that.
Thank you. My name is Cleo Lewis, and first like to thank our Assistant City Manager that was so informative to us, Mr. DeHoney, and our Councilman Garcia and Councilwoman Williams that were present to chair the meetings. I'm the representative from District 3. I'm also Assistant Pastor in the community, and as a result, I was able to attend the meetings, and the committee came up with the reporting recommendation based on prior recommendations to increase transparency. They reviewed a number of reporting informations from the community, and they suggested that that community posted information and updated annually, the outcome of all traffic stops, including demographic data and ICE contacts, the outcome of all arrest information, including demographic data and ICE contacts, and the report on the use of force data, including demographic and ICE contacts, and the report of any instance of in custody death, including the demographic data and ICE contacts. That information, we just kind of requested that that would be reported by the police department to the community partners, as well as posted on their page. Thank you a lot.
Thank you. Our next section has to do with training, and to report on slide 12, Janelle Wood. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Garcia and Councilwoman Thel Williams for their leadership on this particular committee, and my fellow ad hoc committee members, thank you for your insight and your words of wisdom. My role as a Black Mothers Forum President has been to make sure that we create safe and supportive environments for our black youth and our black community. And so, training has been very much, very much a passion of mine to make sure that our officers, as they are engaging with our community, know how to do so in a way that results in them living through the experience. And so, training, the recommendations that we came up with were based on prior recommendations, like the rest of my members have stated. So, based on prior recommendations, we would like to take steps to improve the training in the implicit bias area, the procedural justice, relationship-based policing, crisis intervention, mediation, conflict resolution, rumor control, engagement with our youth, language learners, escalation training, and we really wanted to make sure we have more scenario-based training, and that those of us, members of the community, would be very much a part of those particular developments of those scenarios for our officers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wood. The next section of draft recommendations, staffing and efficiencies. To start the presentation there, we have Stan Bates. Welcome, Mr. Bates.
Just, thank you Assistant Manager DeHoney. I also want to thank you, the other members of the committee, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Williams for your support, all of the council, or all of the ad hoc people that have worked together to make these recommendations be known to the public. I'm just going to go through the recommendations and read them. Recommendation one, based on a recommendation in the Burkhart report, undertake an independent efficiency study to see if it can better align with community needs and a greater emphasis on non-police interventions. Procurement should be done through a community engagement process. Recommendation number two is, as the budget allows, increase the number of CAOs, which is the Community Action Officers, to engage the community. Maintain the four-day, ten-hour work week to ensure coverage of nighttime meetings and weekend meetings. Establish the meeting in the future where officers can communicate with the civilian review board. This is one I think almost every one of the ad hoc members agreed upon, so I think it's important that we emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Just a question, there's no Spanish translation. We are getting messages that they're calling the line, and there isn't anyone translating. Can we get an update on that?
Please.
Hi, this is Casey. We currently do have speakers showing on the Spanish line, and the interpreter is speaking to them. There is a different meeting ID number for the Spanish meeting, which I can give out. It is posted on the agenda. You have to call into the number 602-666-0783, and the ID number is 126-113-1657 is for the Spanish translation. Again, the phone number is 602-666-0783, and the meeting ID number is 126-113-1657. And again, that information is posted on the agenda on phoenix.gov.
Okay, thank you. I'll update you. Thank you.
Thank you. We next move to the citywide section, and Katie Gibson-McLean is going to present that information.
Good afternoon. My name is Katie Gibson-McLean, and I am a public defender in here at Public County, and also a former public high school educator, resident, bishopate, and bishopate. The first recommendation we have in the citywide section is to build on the CPTI, see police forms of minor infractions recommendation, and that comes from the Community Police Trust Initiative recommendations from the Phoenix Police Department from 2015. It's the second recommendation on the first page, if you'd like to reference that. It basically states that they want the police department to adopt preferences for seeking least harm solutions, such as warnings and recitations of new detention for minor infractions, especially for juveniles. In this case, we wanted to build on that, and also prioritize sight and release over arrests. Sight and release to a long-form charging could reduce work for the police department. It could also reduce collateral consequences of arrests, and it could save time and resources and money for our city as well. We could do that by evaluating policies and operations orders to find areas where we can implement more discretion and identify the least harm options that we can address in those areas. Additionally, we would like to capture data regarding this as requested in the report to be reviewed. Finally, we'd also like to have a tab on the Phoenix Police Department website, which links to a dashboard of recommendations, so progress can be tracked by the public, and the city council, and the department, and the civilian review board. In the past, when committees have met and made recommendations, there's been not a whole lot of transparency with regard to the progress made on the implementation recommendations. In fact, it's resulted in committees making more recommendations, and so our hope would be to not have to do this again. And if it were to be done again, it could be built upon by tracking the progress that is made and not having to start from square one. And so, we think that having something that's easily accessible to everyone involved, including the public, is a way to do that.
Thank you very much for that. For the last several days, the draft recommendations have been posted online. Many members of the community have entered comments online regarding their feelings of the draft recommendations. That information has been shared with the ad hoc committee members. Additionally, the recommendations will be online for a few days after this meeting to give people additional opportunity in order to present their thoughts regarding the recommendations. At this time, we want to walk through and call upon the people that have been waiting to speak during the meeting. Each person will have two minutes in order to make their comments, and then we will move forward. So, I will be calling names, and as I do that, one of our staff will be unmuting the person's phone or mic so that they can make their comments. We have the time posted, which I believe people will be able to see, and then we'll move through one to the other. So, the first name that I have to speak is Joby Dickinson. Joby Dickinson. We are showing that Joby Dickinson is not on the line. The next person is Frank Steinmetz.
Good evening. These proposals do not represent every segment of the Phoenix population. They are designed to protect special groups and as such jeopardize the safety of all citizens. This is not equality, it's 100% favoritism. Look at FBI stats, most major crimes are done by people who started out shoplifting, stealing cars, history of traffic alcohol and drug violations, all minor crimes leading to major crimes. Even suggesting that officers overlook minor violations and crime is in itself a violation of the law. These overlooking minor violations and crimes put police officers and citizen's safety in harm's way. Their blood is on your hands. Don't commit crimes, and you will never see a police officer. Simple. Educate your special groups not to commit crimes, and they will never see a police officer. It's that simple. Millions of people live long lives and never interact with a police officer. Why? They don't encourage and don't commit crimes. I encourage every PNP member, block watch member, alumni of Phoenix Police, Citizens Academy, and MCSO Community Academy to review these proposals, put together by this bias group, and speak out against their implementation. Then insist on increasing the police force to at least 3,800 officers. Thank you. Human lives matter.
Next will be Victoria Williams.
Hi, it's Ariel, a council staff. I am on the Spanish line because people are having a lot of issues, so the English, we can hear the English audio very loud and clear, but the Spanish translation is barely audible. Can you all lower the volume on the English, and then maybe Mario, if you could speak a little bit louder, you cannot hear or understand anything.
Ms. Hernandez, this is Casey. If they just turn off the audio on their computer, or wherever they're listening to the WebEx that's English, then they can probably hear the Spanish better, but we'll also try to increase the volume.
No, the phone, we hear the English. No, not on the video, so I took off my audio on the video, and I'm just on the phone, and you can only hear the English.
Okay, we will take a look at that. Thank you.
Victoria Williams here next.
Thank you. This is Victoria Williams, and I would politely like to disagree with the gentleman who spoke before me. I appreciate the reforms that I see presented to us, and the comment that was made about not committing crimes and not getting arrested is something that, is something that is fair across the board, has been proven not to be true. If you have a police officer who knows the community that he's serving, if he is truly a peace officer, and he sees young people doing things they shouldn't be doing, he should be able, or she should be able, to approach them in a way that teaches a lesson, but also shows empathy. It's been proven that Caucasian young adults can do the same types of activities and be as, just as when I was young, you know, as childish or as immature in some of their choices, and those are the young people who are not arrested by police officers, but the people of color, brown and black, Latino and African-American, rather than being given that benefit of the doubt and being corrected gently, and mentored, or, you know, shown a different way of doing things, they are the ones who are arrested. And it's when they go to jail, when they go to prison, that they learn how to be a criminal. So, I truly appreciate what you guys are doing. I hope that we will provide for more oversight in any incidents, and I truly hope that our police officers are focused on being partners with their community and truly serving the community versus policing in a way that is more about intimidation and more about them demanding a respect that they don't give. So, if we can do a better job of working on the psychological side of policing, I think that Phoenix will be far ahead of the game. Thanks for allowing me some time to speak.
Next will be A.J. Marsden.
Hello, my name is A.J., and we all want safe neighborhoods. Well, I'm going to tell you what won't make us safe. Releasing criminals to further victimize us will not make us safe. Policy changes that hinder officers who only have split seconds to de-escalate and stop a threat will not make us safe. We all know a criminal can escalate a situation very quickly. Scrutinizing video excerpts without insight into the whole scene and policing in general will not make us safe. Saying vile things about police officers will not make us safe. Well, defending the police will not make us safe. Fewer officers and detectives will make crimes go unsolved, and dismantling specialty squads who have special skills and tools to apprehend the worst of the worst criminals will not make us safe. As you can see, defunding the police in any way definitely will not make us safe. But I will tell you what will make us safe. Preventing crime makes us safe. More CAOs, perfect idea. Partnering with the police and taking advantage of community resources reduces crime and makes us safe. There are things we can all do now. Partner with your CAOs and your beat officers. Work on fixing trouble spots in your neighborhoods now. Engage neighbors of all ages with events, meetings, block parties. Take advantage of what your local schools have to offer. Contact nonprofits and agencies that provide the job and other services you're all seeking. Get in touch with your NSD neighborhood specialist to best navigate city and community resources. And I'm going to say, please, research the long-term outcomes of any and all recommendations. This will ensure that our officers and our citizens are safe. Every day, our police officers respond to criminal activity. What are you seriously doing now to prevent crime in Phoenix? I'd be happy to chat more about these ideas.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Your two minutes are up. Next, we'll go to Sarah Turney. I'm told Ms. Turney is not on the line. We'll next go to Ann Matlock Ender. So, that person is not on the line as well. Let's go to Alan Whitaker.
Yes, hi, good evening. The one topic that I would like to bring up, actually speaks to the ad hoc committee itself, the new review board that's coming out, and the OET committee as well, and my concern is that these committees do not really have any authority with regard to actual change for the Phoenix Police Department or the City of Phoenix. I would like to propose that we seek an actual police commission. City of Phoenix is the largest city without an independent body tasked with holding the police department accountable. These boards are not put together to stop the police policing themselves, if you will. I think that's the biggest comment that I would like to make during this session, is that I would like to see us seek an actual police commission, and then we would be in line with a lot of the other large cities in the United States. The committees that meet now, and the committees that are being put together, still have to go right back to the Chief of Police and the City Council to have any action take place. So, my concern is that we're, once again, because committees have come and gone in the history of the City of Phoenix, but if they don't have any teeth to actually implement change, we're just spinning our wheels again. So, that's my concern. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. DeHoney. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you, sir. I am the President of the Phoenix Police Sergeants and Lieutenants Association. Our group represents over 400 sworn supervisors of the department. We are opposed to many of these recommendations, either because they already exist in policy, or they are not representative of the will of the vast majority of Phoenix residents. We are concerned for the residents of Phoenix when we hear discussions nationally and locally about defunding the police. This is a dangerous idea with grave consequences for the most vulnerable people in our society, especially at a time when our department staffing has not kept up with the city's growth rate, and we are seeing a rise in violent crime. Homicides and aggravated assaults are up 25% this year alone. Many of the recommendations being made by this committee are seen as defunding and disabling the police at a time when the rule of law is more important than ever, to preserve the constitutional rights of all people. Other data is clear as well. Over the last 30 years, while the population of Phoenix has grown by 90%, the number of officers has only gone up by 50%. We have in effect defunded our police department by 700 officers over the last 30 years, because if we had just kept up with population growth alone, we would have 3,600 officers today instead of our current 2,900. Now, with an understaffed police department which is dealing with rapidly increasing violent crime, there are recommendations coming from this committee to further erode the police by creating either stifling bureaucracy or by cutting resources altogether. This is unacceptable, not just because of what it will do to officer's safety, but what it will do to the safety of our residents. Again, these recommendations do not speak to the will of our residents. If you doubt this, please conduct a citywide survey like the one conducted by Councilwoman Williams in her district, or look back at the voters' will in every election they've had on funding additional officers. They all run by significant margins. This should be the barometer if one truly wants to know what the will of our community is. We would welcome any invitation to participate in problem solving, but these recommendations are not the way forward. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Next is Marcus R.
Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, can you speak just a little louder?
Okay, is that better?
Yes, it is. Please, go ahead.
Okay. So, you know, I've kind of really kind of grown into my perception on this issue, and I decided to kind of look and see what this department did, you know, face-to-face for myself. And really, this department, I don't think can be reformed. I don't think they have the will to do so, and I don't really think they have the skill to do so. To be hearing that these recommendations were from 10 years ago, five years ago, and haven't been implemented just says it all to me. And what is going on in the community is not a misunderstanding, it is a misallocation. Before, forming my opinion, I wanted to see what was going on, so I went downtown to look and see what the police were doing with the protesters. When the protesters were kind of co-opted, and the protesters met with the police chief, and the situation was talking about Minnesota, then the police were, you know, okay with it, but as it progressed, and it required them to have some self-awareness, when people started saying names like Mohammed Mohaiman, and Ryan Whitaker, and Garcia, then the police started arresting all the protesters. So, the self-awareness is not there, and me personally, when the curfew was initiated downtown, after I was getting off of work, they harassed me every single day. There was two police officers that I saw every single day, asked me the same question of whether I was getting off of work. So, my employer, who saw these police bothering me every single day, laid me off for my safety until the Phoenix Police Department calmed down a bit. Now, for a supervisor downtown to lay me off, to have self-awareness, to have to have self-awareness like that, that's ridiculous. We'd need to allocate more of our budgets to a whole lot of other things and not to police. I don't feel like any safer with the police here. Someone was saying that they should have...
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Let's go to Mark Sutton. Mark Sutton is not on the line. We'll go to Dave Norton.
Hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you. I'm retired from 33 years with the Phoenix Police Department, many of those as a sergeant in various positions, and I echo some of the earlier comments about the need for more officers and coverage. There were many times on field squads, I would come to work, and I would have a half or two-thirds of my squad just from vacant positions, and then you get someone that's ill or going to court, you don't have people to cover the area, and it gets very dangerous when things are happening, and the police cannot get to any place to help citizens. So, as the PPS LA president said earlier, it is critical to build up the manpower in the city and not cut funding, because we've already done that by not filling positions, and now we've got a problem. We cannot respond appropriately to calls, and I'm appalled at some of the comments that I'm hearing from others, that things are just horrible in the City of Phoenix. Excuse me, but I'm very proud of my service, and I served all over the City of Phoenix and had many good interactions with citizens. Thank you.
Next will be Anna Hernandez. Next will be Anna Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, hi, my name is Anna Hernandez. I grew up in District Eight, lived and grew up in District Eight my whole life. I too am appalled at some of these comments. The lack of sympathy for human life from these residents of the City of Phoenix, former officers, sergeants, and members of the police unions appall me. The fact that we're prioritizing a job over human life is ridiculous. We have the data that shows that our Black, Brown, and Indigenous people of color are grossly mistreated by police enforcement. So this isn't something we're pulling out of the air, that we need accountability, we need transparency. That's all we're asking for. We're asking for transparency to make sure that the officers that do not do their job through the letter of the law are held accountable and cannot be in our streets, so that we do not keep shedding blood of our loved ones on these asphalt that we all love and love to live in. So, all these suggestions are great and all, if they're actually going to be taken serious. We've had recommendations for the last 25 years, and it took this long to even get a civilian review board enacted, and now we're trying to fund it. So as a resident that has been born and raised in Phoenix, I would suggest that the people that are against some of these policies for transparency and accountability, think of your fellow humans. When they say that it's critical to have funding, that we cut funding and whatnot, guess how teachers feel when we have defunded education systems for years? So maybe if they put themselves in the shoes of the community members that they're actually supposed to protect, they would understand why we're fighting this battle. Thank you for allowing me to time to speak today.
Next will be Katie Baeza. I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly.
Nope, that's okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
Okay. Three months ago, my brother was shot and killed by a Phoenix police officer. My brother being a victim of police violence has affected my family immensely. I don't think anyone realizes how awful this process is until they've gone through it. By the way, my brother's never committed a crime in his life. Phoenix is the largest city without an independent body tasked with holding the police accountable. We need a police commission that holds the department accountable. Funding the CRB was a good start, but when the chief of police has the final say, they're still policing themselves. This is unacceptable. The police cannot police themselves. We need more money put back into our communities to nourish our people rather than bulk up the police department. Less money for police backing lawyers and more money into creating reform and laws that protect citizens from the police. There are many laws in place to protect the police department, but there are severe lack of laws protecting citizens. We need a strict timeline for release of records because families continue to be victimized and they are again not given answers. There should not be edited versions of any sort of records. You cannot build trust within the community when you continue to hide the facts. Body cam video should be what it is. It is what it is. It should not be in the hands of the police for any amount of time to edit. If that's the case, we're right back to whatever the police said happened, happened. Transparency is not an edited video. Training is secondary to accountability for me. If a properly trained officer can still get away with misconduct, training does not matter. Training needs to be focused on de-escalation tactics and less on lethal force. We shouldn't have to fear if we call 911, a reckless officer is going to show up and someone may lose their life. It needs to be a requirement that officers intervene when a fellow officer is using unnecessary force. Also, a requirement that if an officer witnesses another fellow officer unjustifiably kills someone in the line of duty that they reported immediately. The mentality of the whole department needs to change. When you start holding your own accountability, you get your sex frust from the community. When you cover for yourself, you don't stand up for what's right, you will never have our trust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go to Sadie Whitaker.
I signed up because I thought I would maybe keep thinking. They're going to be like... Because I was gonna, yeah, it stressed me out so much that I was like, I can't... They're still waiting.
Okay, let's move on to Marty Winkler.
My name is Marty Winkler. I am an extreme victim of Jason Gillespie and Phoenix police. Within two minutes, Jason Gillespie of the Sunny Slope Substation, Desert Horizon Precinct, horrifically bludgeoned me half to death, inflicting four fractures to my skull, traumatic brain injury, almost losing an eye, and horrific head injury, when I called police to file a police report, and he falsely accused me of trespassing. The City of Phoenix and Phoenix police have done everything for over six years to concoct and spread a false narrative that I was trespassing and combative when I called the police for help and had my hands up in fear as Jason Gillespie was enraged and violently attacked me. No one is talking about police throwing people violently to the ground on their head like what Jason Gillespie did to me. Unless someone is a violent threat, throwing people violently to their head, to the ground, must stop. The training must change. Phoenix police have a minimal training in de-escalation, which must dramatically be increased along with non-escalation, which is what Jason Gillespie did to me. Yearly psych evaluations must be implemented to eliminate enraged and violent police like Jason Gillespie. Several other men horrifically had horrific situations and a horrific assault with Jason Gillespie. He should have been fired by a thorough psych evaluation. Any Phoenix police that have serious misconduct and domestic violence must be fired and prosecuted. Phoenix police erased Jason Gillespie's misconduct and horrific assault, and it was never in his file. Jason Gillespie is a threat and a menace to society and the safety of civilians. He's still at the Sunny Slope Substation, and Phoenix police have done everything to protect, and nothing has been done to him. There has to be dramatic change to stop the violence, cover-up, and corruption of Phoenix police and the City of Phoenix.
Thank you. Next is Emily Snyder.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
My name is Emily Snyder. I'm a native Phoenix resident and registered nurse in the community. I've been encouraged by the efforts of our community showing up to demand real changes with our police department. There have been unsuccessful attempts in the past, and it has shown through the continued police violence, despite an increasing budget, with no improvement in the situation. I urge our council, that was created to be a voice for the community, to truly fight for what our community is asking for. Many of these recommendations have little to no evidence to show that they've been successful in other departments. As one of the earlier callers stated, many of these policies are already in place with no changes. For years, we have poured money into this ceiling system that is killing our people. There are well-established crisis response teams and mental health facilities that would be more equipped to utilize this funding than people trained to shoot to kill. That is not what someone needs during a mental health crisis. The communities are, the community are the ones funding the police, and we should have a say on how that funding is utilized. I fully support increasing transparency and data collection practices, although I'm very disheartened that this has not already been in place in practice for decades. Again, a further testament to how more funding is not going to save this sinking ship. Officers should have no option of having a disciplinary record expunged. As a nurse, if I hurt, injure, or kill a patient, there is no way that would ever be removed from my record, and police should be held to the same standards. More cops will not solve this situation. Again, these are futile efforts in trying things that have already proven they do not work and if not create more violence. I'm thinking of the several killings where community members have shot and killed people who they deemed suspicious because of rights given by the police department. And I am truly disgusted that this document that has been put out continues to advocate for the continued relationship of the police with ICE. This is supposed to be a board representing the community. Why would you support an organization that is literally ripping the community apart? The whole document is not very useful if we continue to support Phoenix police working with ICE. Thank you.
Next is Sarah Richter.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Thank you. The culture is... No amount of training or reform is going to change the system. We need to tear it down, the old systems, and build up new and on better foundation. As someone who used to conduct implicit bias sessions with Border Patrol, I would watch their eyes glaze over and they continue to chew on their testosterone sludge. They didn't listen to me, and the same toxic culture and brotherhood is established here in the police department. A fact manifest, however, that there is an exorbitant amount of deaths of Black folk at the hands of police and also a disproportionate amount of presence of police in the day-to-day lives of people of color. Black Americans in particular are third more likely than whites to be stopped by police, a third more likely to be ticketed during these stops, and a third, three times more likely to be searched. They're three times more likely to be subjected to the use of force, and studies have found that unarmed Black folk are three and a half times more likely to be shot by police than unarmed whites. The signs point to an implicit bias playing on the roles of a broader disparity between police interactions with whites and people of color. A study in 2001 found that cops are consistently more likely to associate Black faces with criminality and identify more common objects as weapons. In 2007, a team of researchers at the University of Colorado Neuroscience read a, ran through a... That repeatedly chucked thoughts on...
Thank you, I'm sorry. Camille Johnson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
Thank you. First, I'd like to address all the previous callers that I'm presuming are privileged white people, saying we need more cops to keep us safe. You may think cops keep you safe because you're white, but they do not keep Black and Brown community members safe. And let's not forget, Ryan Whitaker was white, and that didn't stop police from shooting him as he had his hands up. City council members and community members, you've had a year to discuss and come up with recommendations to address Phoenix Police Department's brutality. To say your proposals are disappointing is an understatement. I'm happy to say, I'm happy to see that you recommend options for mental health crisis teams that have no police involvement. Community members have the right to crisis teams, but don't call the cops on them. I've witnessed atrocious behavior from officers towards people in crisis. Cops have no business answering mental health calls. As for the rest of the proposals, they are weak performance measures, and they will not work. We need to defund the police already. We want more implicit bias training, more so-called community cops, more reports to tell us what we already know. Phoenix PD is brutalizing and killing Black and Brown community members at a disproportionate rate, and having more cops who have to go through more training, though they would just disregard and make more reports after they murder people, will do nothing to stop these deaths. Since Dion Johnson and George Floyd died on May 25th and sparked a national uprising, three more people have died at the hands of Phoenix PD: James Garcia, Ramon Lopez, and Jeremiah Hand. Say their names and burn them into your memory. These men should still be here, but you failed to act and you continue to fail to act. The community has been crying out to defund the police, and you refuse to listen. I urge you to reconsider your recommendations and start over with community input instead of a panel filled with formal cops. Thank you.
Amy Meglio.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We could hear you.
Wonderful. So my name is Amy Meglio, and I am a resident and a volunteer with the Grassroots Law Project. So while the proponents for the police can only appeal to your emotions, I would like to bring up some actual clearance rates in relation to budget, in opponents of any increased staffing or funding specifically known to recommendation two understaffing. This isn't just dangerous, it's redundant, and it's fiscally irresponsible. According to FBI data from 2010 to 2019, while our budget increased from $520 million in 2010 to the current $744 million, homicide rate went from 72.4% clearance rate in 2010 to 68.9% clearance rate in 2019. So this just shows that increased police funding and increased officers and increased training measures have done absolutely nothing. In fact, they've done the opposite in regards to police doing their jobs. And if the former sergeant who spoke wants to be offended by something, he should be offended by the Phoenix Police Department's clearance rate, the rate which, according to the FBI, is just 11% over that 10-year time period. A comparable city in size is Philadelphia, they have a 51% clearance rate for rape, and they don't take up 52% of the budget. The national clearance rate for rape is 33.4%. So the FBI concluded in 2019 in its annual crime report data that in Phoenix, Phoenix PD left over half of all the homicides unsolved and left almost all rapes unsolved. So that is why recommendation number two is, it was fiscally irresponsible. We've proved empirically over the last 10 years that increased funding does not equal increased safety. And then I'd also like to touch to a point that somebody brought up earlier. You cannot increase funding or train away a toxic culture. I'd like to bring up the 2019 merit recipients by the City of Phoenix.
I'm sorry, your time is up, ma'am, thank you. Next, we'll go to Paris Boar.
Hi, my name is Paris Boar, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please go ahead.
Okay, great. I just want to start this by saying that you've heard all of this before, and you need to hear it again because it needs to be implemented. Yes, we need more support for services, and we need more money going to services, but if that money is just going to police within those services, as we saw Phoenix City Council do just a couple weeks ago with their response to homelessness, that is a waste of money. That's not helping anybody. We don't need more criminalization, okay? And yeah, this is our money. A participatory budget should be implemented, and we, as the people, should get to decide where our money goes. And we don't want any more police violence. We don't want any of it, we want none. You know, like, we don't want you to just own up to it and then continue to do it. That's not helping, okay? Stop killing people in Phoenix, stop killing Black and Brown bodies, and stop hiding how violent your police are. You should be transparent about how horrible this institution is. Yeah, and you cannot train away this problem, as the person who spoke before me said. It's ingrained in the entire existence of the police, okay? Like, you're just spending more money on anti-bias trainings that are obviously not working. People continue to die for no reason, all these preventable deaths in Phoenix, and for Community cops are still killing us, okay? We don't need any more cops, we don't need any new cops, we don't need a different kind of cop. We need no cops. Stop collaborating with ICE, stop criminalizing Black and Brown bodies, and the police can't be trusted to track their own reforms. Thank you.
Next will be Tina Luna.
Yeah, hi, this is Tina Luna, and my statement, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. You cannot reform a broken system. Police forces were formed in the United States based on white supremacist ideology and keeping enslaved people enslaved. The very foundation on which these institutions are based is rotten. We want an end to police violence, not just make new definitions of excuses for acceptable violence. The system is flawed. More money to the police does not solve the problem. Police need to be defunded, and something new needs to be put in its place. Communities know what they need. Community action officers are still police, they cause harm. Every dollar spent on CAOs takes away the opportunity to invest in the community, to heal the harm that has been and continues to be perpetrated on Black, Brown, Native, poor, and unsheltered communities. These studies and their recommendations are just delay tactics that are searching for solutions that the police and supporters will comfortable with. They do not create... They do not damage harm. The health and well-being of the community should always be before police. Police and police unions are only concerned with... Police and police unions are only concerned with self-preservation. Protects and serve does not mean everyone. I am protected and served by the system because I'm an old white woman. Communities of color are overpoliced, they get harassed, cited and arrested for things that I as a white person would not even be questioned or strong for. My life matters, but the lives of my black, brown and native neighbors don't. They are not protected and served by the system and I want that to end. Black Lives
Thank you, next is James Martinez.
Hi, my name's James Martinez and I'm a resident of District Three. Um, so I'm gonna say that I actually um was impressed by the recommendations of the committee. Um, I think after reading through them that a lot of it is just very common sense steps um that can only make life better for both the community and the police. Um, this isn't about punishing the police and it's about trying to help the community develop a better understanding of what the police do in their jobs, but then also helping the police understand the challenges and the concerns that citizens have when it comes to engaging with them. And, you know, you talk about, you know, providing social services and partnerships to the community so that situations can be resolved without the police having to intervene. So that to me seems like a win-win for everyone. And so a lot of the comments that I'm hearing, I kind of challenge them who've spoken against this, you know, either pro or con, to actually read the recommendations and not just rely on simplistic talking points like defund the police, whether you're for it or whether you're using that as a, you know, a tactic to say, you know, that that's totally bad. That's not what these recommendations are are calling for and nor do I think that's realistic. Um, I've actually appreciated the response that I've gotten from the Phoenix Police um over the years, the few times that I've had to call them. And yet, even Mr. Trump signed an executive order banning chokeholds and no knock warrants. So there you go, there has to be some middle ground here. So anyone who kind of disagrees with these, um, I feel like is, you know, being kind of a bad actor and not totally acting in good faith and maybe they need to go back and reread the recommendations and or if they're on the opposite side to really kind of educate themselves about the challenges facing um the community. Um, I think members of the police probably dread going into situations where they have to use force. And so these will help them
Thank you, your time is up, thank you, sir. Uh, next is um it, I'm probably not pronouncing this correctly, Jisoo Kim?
Yeah, Jisoo, that's me.
Jisoo Kim? Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
I'd like to address some of the language that's been used in these recommendations and why those recommendations should not go forward. These improvements in officer training have already been tried across the country and they have proven ineffective time and time again. These improvements are mere supplements to the rest of officer training or the entire rest of the policing enterprise is based on surveillance of people, protecting property, meeting quotas, et cetera. This is why the idea of relationship-based policing is particularly laughable. The relationship between police and who? One has to question the legitimacy of a policing model in which officers deputize community members they alone deem acceptable and compliant. The committee must come to understand that the end goal is not just a greater emphasis on non-police interventions, but a shift to one hundred percent non-police interventions. Efficiency, using that word, is ironically the right mindset with which to approach the contact police between police and prisons and individuals. Efficiency in police operations would simply mean less of it. We know that the vast majority of police work involves bureaucratic tasks, surveillance and looking for crime. Efficiency for the people would mean no interaction with the police and instead only interaction among each other to minimize harm, keep themselves safe and promote healing. If the goal is to quote align with community needs unquote by way of financial efficiency, then it follows that the ballooning police budget is wholly redirected toward investments in community care. It must be understood that the end goal of the community is not to come to trust the police and counsel. Officers' self-reporting statistics, as well as publicizing them on their own website, leaves great room for abuse of such a system of quote unaccountability unquote. We know from past attempts at reforms that self-reported data though through such message that method methods, excuse me, as body cameras have not ended police terrorizing communities. Police cannot be reformed, their power and scope must be reduced altogether, thank you.
Next is Andrew Goss. Uh, Andrew is not on the line, we'll next go to Mark Davis.
Can you hear me?
Uh, we can hear you, but we're picking up a lot of background noise as well. Please go ahead.
I'd like to say, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. The city as a whole will not stand by, idle and abandon the brave men and women that don the uniform of a law enforcement officer. In every department and position that you may hold, you have our I've lived in Phoenix since nineteen sixty-seven. And to my knowledge and in my history as a black man, it refers to parenting and knowledge to understand that the public also shares in the responsibility of de-escalation. Our police officers, both men and women, they become a danger every day. There is no such thing as de-escalating a bullet. When a police officer has to make a critical decision, it is understandable that they are under mental pressure and in some cases, physical pressure when it, when dealing with a combatant. I agree with most of the recommendations that the council has set forward. I do take issue with certain things. Education should be a responsibility and counseling should be available for police officers on a regular basis. They're dealing with fear and high levels of stress and have families to go home to as well. These officers are dealing with these situations on an everyday basis. Yes, things get out of hand, things get very difficult sometimes. As a ten-year-old young man, I witnessed a police officer here in Phoenix in nineteen
Thank you for your time, next is Nicholas Olamis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, please go ahead.
All right, thank you, my name is Nicholas Olamise, I'm a member of the Black Lives Matter Metro Phoenix and our voice, our vote, uh Arizona. I live in uh CD six, LD twenty-eight, Moon Valley area. I'm on this call to hold the ADHOC committee uh accountable because I feel like there's special interests that's at play. Uh, I feel like you need to do the right thing. Increasing numbers of CE uh CAOs will require a budget increase and will take funding from the rural community services, affordable housing and even the healthcare education. Uh, when we say, you know, defund the police, we're talking about you guys as the council members to follow the general plan, uh the Phoenix General Plan, which was created March fourth, twenty fifteen. So pretty much uh the three basic benefits are pros- uh prosperity, health and environment. I mean, we're talking education, services, housing, transportation options. We're talking parks, recreation, trails, um clean air, clean water and all those things, so the money that you guys are spending, that's where you need to get back to, get back to the basics because that general plan is still out there and you guys call it the Bible and it's what's needed to be uh read because it tells you exactly what Phoenix would look like if you followed the general plan. Um, you know, and I'll leave you with this, you know, uh you guys don't have no right to be in position of power. Uh, this is a public service office, I mean, you guys were voted in uh for that seat and you can be voted out, so I feel like you need to do the right thing. Um, you know, the, this is your legacy that you're, that you are, that you're implementing, so this is what you're gonna you know, this is what we're gonna remember you for. So again, you know, make the right decision with what needs to happen, thank you.
Robert Branscombe?
Good evening, uh Assistant City Manager Tony, and thank you for having me on this evening, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, quite clearly, please go ahead.
All right, thank you, uh, I can appreciate a lot of the comments that the people on this call have made today. Um, but I think some things need to be directly addressed. And one of those things is defunding the police and I think a lot of people imagine that the police department would just disappear when you say defund the police and that's not true. Defunding the police really means reallocat- reallocating resources to different parts of the community to try to help that community and and so the community themselves can prevent some crimes. Uh, another aspect of this is accountability. We all want to be accountable for our actions. Uh, the police holds accountable for ours and so why not for the police accountable for theirs? We're not saying all police officers are bad or all police officers commit crimes. What we saying though is those individuals who abuse their authority need to be held accountable and removed from the police department if they continue to do that. Now, training is involved, yes, we need to train them. Adding more police, does that solve it? No, that's just more people feel like they're patrolling and keeping the natives in line. Uh, another issue that I'd like to bring up is the qualified immunity. And the qualified immunity means that in the performance of their duty, that they feel that they are protected from an act that they have to make uh in a split second. No one says that the police officer's job is not an easy job, it is. Uh, it's an honorable position and we should hold it with that respect. But we also want to hold them accountable when there are instances that didn't need to have the type of uh harsh enforcement threatening or dominating presence to the public community. So I appreciate what the ad hoc committee has done, at least tried to bring some of those uh issues to light and try to find some resolve. A lot of these issues are systemic, they involve more than just policing, but with the police uh needing to hold their people accountable and the community supporting that accountability, well, we, that's what we need to do to make Phoenix a safer place and I thank you for your time this evening.
Alyssa Peralta?
Hi, um, to the woman who assumed all callers calling in support of police are white privileged, my Mexican and live in an impoverished area of District Eight. Many have demanded numerous changes to be made to PPD, but in the end, these changes won't ever be enough because individuals like Carlos Garcia and groups like Pulete and BLM harbor an anti-police rhetoric and their ultimate goal is to have the police force dismantled. He continued to pander to the request and no sooner Phoenix wound up like Minneapolis and countless other cities across the US where criminals run rampant and crime set an all-time high. Police are vital to public safety while the mayor and select members of her council have been preoccupied with finding ways to appease and fulfill the demands of everyone but law-abiding citizens. The Phoenix police officers have been keeping your community safe, working overtime to cover violent protests on top of their regularly scheduled patrol shifts. Taking funds from Phoenix police to fuel your social programs won't be Phoenix the saving grace, it will be the city's downfall. We bear witness to the workings of these social programs in other states and they have alluded to less police and more crime. What we need is a mayor and a council who want to see and build a relationship between law enforcement and the community rather than pursue divisive avenues and preach their anti-police narrative. Phoenix police is implementing the necessary changes to become a better police force. What are the mayor and her council doing to be more transparent, available and less biased to the residents they serve? And since our mayor has yet to say it, I would like to thank the brave men and women at PPD for keeping our community safe, thank you.
Adriana Gonzalez? Michelle? Yes, Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Please go ahead.
So I'd just like to say that these uh meetings are super inaccessible to people um still. And to start for recommendation one, uh we need mental health services to be entirely separate from police. The CIT is housed in the police department, by calling for this investment, you're actually just increasing the police budget. For recommendation two, the city shouldn't have a say uh or try to dissuade people from having a say over their money, really, which is the general fund. Um, next, uh CAOs are the equivalent of SROs, they serve no effective purpose. Um, and friendly cops still kill us because at the end of the day, they're still cops. Um, we are way past the need of another report. Uh, we are in the middle of the worst economic recession in recent history, a deadly pandemic and nationwide protests to defund the police. Hiring more officers is a financially reckless decision. If people love to talk about uh representing special interests, it really sounds like the department is negotiating against the taxpayers' um best interest, right? Like negotiating for special interests. Um, especially since everyone, regardless of status, pays into the general fund when they go make a purchase at the grocery store, right? Um, we must stop the plans to hire new additional cops and we must halt the practice of hiring new officers to replace those who are retiring, resigning or getting fired. Defund the police, free the people, thank you.
Michelle Enriqueth? Herbert Carrillo? Herbert Carrillo?
Hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you. Please go ahead. Mr. Carrillo, are you still there?
I'm here, sir, can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, as I stated, uh, my name is Herb Sril, I'm a cousin to Ryan Whitaker. I'm also retired sergeant, thirty years with the Los Angeles Police Department. Um, with half my career dedicated to in-service training. I'm sad today to say that I'm actually ashamed and somewhat embarrassed of how the death of Ryan Whitaker has been looked upon and how it was treated. But I want to discuss the need, why there's a need for, a desperate need to establish an independent citizen police commission, not an ad hoc committee, not a citizen review board. The city of Los Angeles has a police commission and at one time we had a school teacher, a banker, three business leaders that were all appointed to this police commission and they have a direct oversight as when officers involved in deadly shootings, whether the shootings itself or or the use of extreme excessive force is whether it's in policy or out of policy. Um, and then it goes back to the chief of police if it's out of policy to to determine what type of of um disciplinary action is taken. With the city of of Phoenix though, you have no, no authority. You have no authority at all to oversee these, Chief Williams still sees oversees her own troops. Her command staff still makes these decisions on what is in policy and what is out of policy. This should be an independent review. If it was an independent review today, officers could shoot in a, shoot in Ryan Whitaker twice in the back should be an, be deemed as an out of policy shooting. This, this officer still being out in the street as a, as a ad hoc committee, when you people drive home tonight, you should be asking yourself, this guy is still a liability to the city, a risk to public. Why then do we still have him out in the street? Why is this still going on? Even after still reviewing some of the footage, I saw a lot of misconduct with supervisors and officers at the scene. This is all hush-hush information, it will never be brought out because there is no direct oversight with the police commission. I'm available to help out any way I can with my training and experience. All I need is for you folks is to reach out and to get some real transport transparency and real reform with the department, thank you.
Candace Fremell?
Okay, are you there?
Yes, we are. Yes, if you could speak a little louder.
Hello?
Yes, we're, we're here.
Hello, I'm on the phone?
Yes, ma'am, you're on the it, it's your turn.
Can you hear me through this device then?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry, I was on the phone, I was told to call in. Uh, Candace Fremell, I've been a long Candace Fremell, I've been a longtime forever resident in the city of Phoenix since 1977, involved with neighborhood and community programs since about 1992. We are not currently funding our community programs sufficiently. And our wake-up clubs, our precincts, our community action officers, and the outreach programs that they do are currently accessing neighborhood lock watch grants and having to go through other grant processes to the tune of probably close to at least $600,000 every year. So before we start looking at defunding or decreasing or changing what their allocations are, take a look at the three propositions that our voters have overwhelmingly approved every time it's on before the voters for actual approval for the public safety funding and the neighborhood preservation. Our officers, our community action officers, they're the ones that address chronic issues with landlords, slum lords, the illegal activities, the prostitution, the drug dealings. They have shut down houses in my neighborhoods. They've shut down the chop shops with the bicycles and thefts. We need our community action officers, but they're being pulled into supporting TRU. They're being pulled and put back on a patrol. If we're going to build better relationships in our communities, then we need those officers available to the communities to do their job. I want to thank everyone on this committee who has dedicated so much time and energy that I do appreciate it. I've been an active community hall citizen, and I know what it is, and I thank you for what you've done. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Travis Shepard?
Am I coming through?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I stated my name is Travis Shepard. I am a city of Phoenix police officer out of the South Mountain Precinct. However, the majority of my working and career life has been outside of law enforcement. I am grateful to the city council and this ad hoc committee for the process that's been rolled out thus far. I have a list of what I hope are practical and constructive recommendations, some counter to what has been offered and others outside of that. First and foremost, the reduction of officers or resources to the city of Phoenix Police Department in my mind would be a very irresponsible, unwise move, demonstrating a lack of stewardship for the shalom, the peace, and the well-being and welfare of the citizens of the city of Phoenix. I would like to see further funds put toward the mental health training for officers. SRO officers to be placed back in schools and CAO units bolstered. I'd also like to see two courses implemented in the education system, one being interacting with law enforcement as a mandatory course, as well as that course being refreshed at the point that someone receives their driver's license in the city of Phoenix. A family dynamics course that would also be mandatory at the school age. I'd like to implore this committee to look at the Bossier City Community Renewal as a model for city transformation that includes the collaboration and partnership of clergy. I do believe that conflict resolution, interpersonal skill training, and cultural awareness for officers needs to be increased, and I would invite the city council to audit those courses at the Phoenix Police Academy. In conclusion, I'd like to see the PIO office increase their presence with the visual storytelling team at the city of Phoenix, which highlights redemptive and positive interactions with the city of Phoenix and police officers.
Thank you. Erica Ovale? Erica, are you there? Erica, can you hear us? Let's go to Luke Black.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I would just... One, I'd like to just briefly address what the officer who called in before mentioned in terms of community members being required to take interacting with police classes and also family dynamic classes. This is the kind of bias that illustrates why officers are totally inappropriately ill-equipped to be handling intense situations on our street. They come with biases. They do not and are not interested in addressing those biases, and they carry those biases into their work. When we come to the community recommendations, the sanctity of life clause, what is that? Like, there's no infrastructure in place to define what that means. It will be left in the hands of officers, and we've seen how they handle the sanctity of life. They've killed people in their cars while they're sleeping. They shoot people on sight. They're not going to respect a sanctity of life clause. The recommendation on data collection, it's really an embarrassment. The city of Phoenix, as the fifth-largest city in the country, has a police department that is not collecting this data. We need to be collecting all data on all interactions between law enforcement and the community, and if cops cannot record that data, they should not be interacting with our community members. Purging officer records, if we're going to be giving officers the capacity to take people's life, those records need to stay active. The disciplinary procedures that those officers have been assigned need to stay public records so that we know who is actually policing our streets. Further on, the CAOs, those are just more police. It doesn't mean, it doesn't make them better if you just call them safe or cool.
Thank you. Ariana Gisette?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Why is it our police department that is always scrutinized for doing their job? When are we going to hold district leaders accountable for continuously ignoring our cries for help with our declining neighborhoods because they are too busy pandering to extremist groups like Bled, who wants to completely abolish police when the ultimate goal should be building relationships and fighting crime? As a Latina woman who is actually active in my community, the only support and help I've gotten is from my police and from my CAO, who is always there to answer my calls and emails regarding serious crimes such as drugs, slum around properties, and gun violence, which happens in my neighborhood daily. Change starts at home. Get involved in your communities and get to know your police officers in your precinct. When do we get leaders that don't pander to one side, leaders that support our police because of the constant criminalization? And these recommendations aren't it. How is it people with zero experience in law enforcement get to make these recommendations? I just want to go ahead and thank our brave women and men in blue for always being there to help my community, for protecting our city from protests. Just know that there are people that like us that support you on a daily basis. Thank you.
Maria Sanchez? Maria Sanchez? Bianca Torres?
Yes, my name is Bianca Torres, and I just wanted to say that I did review the recommendations. And while I agree with most of them, I think they are stuck in the right direction. I do have some concerns about some of the recommendations. For example, like community engagement. None of the recommendations cited within that recommendation actually say that people of the community should be directly involved in the city's public safety portion of the budget. The recommendations cited actually state that there should be listening sessions and community surveys, community surveys, which I think would be a more appropriate way to go about it. Allowing people of the community to directly be involved would only allow uninformed people to have a direct impact on how the city's public safety funds are spent. Requiring de-escalation or requiring exhausting all alternative measures would also be harmful to officers who are in dangerous situations. Criminals do not follow procedures and can escalate situations in seconds. These requirements would have deadly effects on officers. And any training must be done by a neutral third party in order to be effective. Any training by a hostile or opponent to the police would only be a waste of time. In order for training to be productive and meaningful, the creation and implementation of the training must account for its audience, which would be the police. In our current environment with organizations like Bled calling for the defunding of Phoenix police, working in law enforcement is now more than ever a thankless position. I believe that a civilized community needs law and order and law enforcement. Things may not be perfect, but in order to achieve any meaningful change, we must charge forward as a united community and stop the idea that the police department and the community is us versus them. Thank you for the time.
Okay, we're going to go back and try Maria Sanchez again. Ms. Sanchez, are you there? All right, let's go to Deborah Rice.
Hi, thank you. I am a single mom living in a blue-collar neighborhood from a multi-ethnic family. We are comprised in our family of black, brown, Native American, Irish, and German. We are a mix. We are not a privileged people. We are a blessed people. Our family has had many encounters with the police as we have been victims, and I am honored and thankful that we have police who will stand and defend our family regardless of our color. Furthermore, I am appalled, I guess, best word, at people who can use words like privilege and cops, which sounds so disrespectful to me. I am certain that we can come to a better solution to this problem than defunding, which doesn't mean doing completely away, but diverting funds to other programs that we have already seen throughout history has been ineffective. We have good and we have bad, and we need to protect the good that is within the police department. Thank you.
Christopher Cabo? Isabel Garcia?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Isabel Garcia. I live in South Phoenix in District Seven. And I just want to reiterate what my friend said earlier that hiring more officers is financially reckless, and most importantly, it's out of line with community demands for a new kind of police safety that does not include police. The department is hiring new officers to reach their goal of 3,125 cops. We must stop the plans to hire these new additional cops, and we must halt the practice of hiring new officers to replace those who are retiring, resigning, or getting fired. I don't want and I don't need more cops in my community. I don't need more cops surveilling and hurting my neighborhood. Every time I leave my house, I see a cop on the road doing nothing for me and just hurting my community. What I want is to defund the police. I also want to comment on the interpretation services that are provided at these public city meetings. I know that simultaneous interpretation is very difficult, I know. But it is so disrespectful to our non-English speakers to not have qualified interpretation that can be clearly heard and understood, and that also transmits the message and emotion of the speaker. Throughout this meeting, our Spanish-speaking community could not fully hear the interpreter, and the interpretation was not being done fully or accurately. There's no excuse for the city to not have this figured out by now. You must invest in quality interpretation and also learn more about language justice. And if you've never heard that, if you've never heard about language justice, we'll talk to you about it. We'll teach you about it so that you can get the interpretation services that will ensure everyone is heard and can fully participate in these so-called public community meetings.
Alice Wells? Latoya Tolliver? We have the initial B. Toy, T-H-O-I.
Hello there, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, fabulous. Hi, I'm a resident of Phoenix, and I'm a staff member at Unitarian Universalist Justice AZ, an organization that works to put the values of people of faith into action. I'm here to share the views of people of faith here in Phoenix. First, I'd like to say that this meeting is incredibly inaccessible, and you all should consider how committed you are to acting out public comment with a system like this in place to listen to the input of your community. That being said, the stated purpose of this community demonstrates why there's a lack of trust between the community and PPD. People of faith in Phoenix have come to reviews, recommendation committees, and other forums such as these for years, and watched the failure of police reforms to end the horrors of police violence in communities who are disproportionately harmed by police. PPD's track record in managing its own reform has been abysmal, and the proof is in the pudding that they cannot be relied upon to infirmly solve their own issues. We are tired of meaningless symbolic gestures prompting change that never gets delivered like past efforts to create recommendations for PPD or small changes in policy wording like the empty sanctity of life clause. Many of the recommendations being proposed by this committee only serve to increase the budget and scope of the PPD, something many people of faith living in Phoenix feel directly conflicts with their values to hold dearly the value of the inherent dignity and worth of every person, or these reforms simply don't go far enough. Mental health services should be provided outside of the police department and in the hands of trained professionals and community members. Calling cops, community action officers cannot be used as an excuse to foot the bill for hiring hundreds of more officers who will only be used as a distraction from ongoing police violence. Transparency is needed between our community and the people who police them, and research into the issues and paths of police violence is needed, but transparency must be full and open and not funded by giving PPD more of our tax dollars. We're in the middle of the greatest economic crisis in years, a deadly pandemic, and a nationwide movement to reduce the continually misused power of policing. Hiring more officers would be financially reckless and ignore the needs and input of the community. At a time when vital neighborhood services are in danger, our schools are facing unprecedented challenges with little support from our state and national leaders, and our community is facing an eviction and housing crisis.
Thank you. Matt Bridges?
Hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I think from listening to everyone speak prior, there's just this kind of, you know, support for police, and then there's the other side that obviously wants to reduce them. I think that what we're ultimately talking about is transparency. Transparency, you know, our lives are in the hands of doctors and nurses, and as the nurse who spoke before mentioned, her record and doctors' records are always available. Because if a doctor, if someone that has your life in their hands does something wrong, they need to be held accountable for it so that they are possibly not in that position anymore and don't pose another threat. I've heard so much praise for the Phoenix Police Department, and I don't know whether, you know, that praise has merited or not. I don't know. I just don't. If we have transparency, if we are able to see what's going on, that it's not a black box, if records are not expunged, then the Phoenix Police Department will prove to us how great it is. We can see the ratio of really successful interactions and the very minute, small, bad apple, bad interactions. Prove it to us. What's the fear? I don't understand. In any job that we have in the private sector, accountability is number one. I mean, if you're a parent, you hold your child accountable. y- you hold your child accountable, you hold people around you accountable. Why would we not expect and demand that from our police? And again, what, where's the, what's the fear? What's, what's the real? I don't understand what the, wh- what is it that's being hidden? Um, I, I just, it just seems like if, if the service is, is so wonderful and it's doing all this, then just prove it to us. Show us the numbers. Thank you.
Lucinda Anderson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I wanted to say that Phoenix is experiencing crimes far beyond what is being talked about, from missing children, children falling victims to crime, illegal substances heavily infecting our population, all the way down to violent crimes that are becoming cold cases. Phoenix is the fifth largest city in the nation with a department extremely overworked and understaffed. Reallocating or defunding Phoenix PD will be detrimental to the community. Just to give a ten-year-old murder case was announced and a suspect was indicted. I have a brother whom I never met that was murdered and to this day his case has gone unsolved and cold. With lack of funding, there's a chance his case may never be solved. What hasn't been made main news are the officers helping domestic vi- victims of domestic violence escaping their situations, using their own funds to buy necessities when encountering someone less fortunate or the squads that volunteer their time to mentor those in the re-entry project, assuring that they have all the resources that they need when released and countless other actions. Before you say defund the police, go on a ride along, test out on a simulator, attend the citizens civilian academy so you can gain better knowledge on day-to-day interactions. Get involved in your community, volunteer your time and make a difference in your community. Don't expect someone else to do it. Just for the record, I'm a, I'm not a privileged white person. I am a Latina born and raised in South Phoenix with the teachings of right and wrong and I give back to my community. And I just want to say thank you to Phoenix PD for keeping our community safe.
Kristin Sellers.
Uh, yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, we can.
Thank you. I want to say that Black Lives Matter, community policing does nothing to address the systemic issues and severe mistrust of police forces that exists in our society at large and the Phoenix area specifically. CAOs are still police. Increasing the force of CAOs is a misuse of funds that could be allocated toward mental health resources, affordable housing and education. CAOs monitor sites such as nextdoor.com to monitor community issues, which just increases police surveillance and continues to perpetuate police violence. Having more CAOs does not address the fundamental issue that police are violent, especially so against black people and other people of color and this need to be defunded. Phoenix PD must immediately prioritize the site and release policy to reduce the community's direct interaction with police and with ICE. Between 2010 and 2016, there were nearly fifteen thousand complaints of sexual and physical abuse filed against ICE, which is extremely concerning. I am calling for the city of Phoenix to immediately end all cooperation with ICE and to defund their police force. Thank you.
Nicholas Woodall.
Yeah, you can hear me?
Yes, sir.
Right, so uh first, is this the final meeting of this group? I know there's some issues online. It says it could have already been sunset by July.
No, it was extended, so it is not the final meeting.
Okay, can you tell me how many more meetings?
There, there's, there's one more meeting after this one and that would be the last one.
Okay, so where is the list of what's made by citizens? Uh, all the information that has been presented to you that you will ultimately present to the police chief or whoever is you're presenting to.
So the recommendations have been available online. Many people have already commented.
Katie has it?
I'm sorry.
Katie, or Katie, Casey Howard has that info?
She does have it, but it's also been, it's been posted online. Many people have commented on it already. And it'll still be posted after tonight for a few more days.
Okay, so my question, where are the rules, guidelines and laws that every day govern the operations of law enforcement every day? Meaning everything from filing paperwork to questioning suspects when police.
Mr. Woodall, are you going to give any comments on the draft recommendations this evening?
Um, you know what? No, I guess um not being properly informed on that next. If that's what you're saying.
Yes, so what we're doing is taking comment from the public on the recommendations.
Uh, right, so you won't be adding any additional recommendations?
That hasn't been determined, but you will have an opportunity to make comments. So I would, uh, I guess request you to go online and look at the recommendations and if you want to make some comments, you would have that opportunity. Uh, we'll need to move on to our next presenter and that is our next speaker and that is Jenny Clark. Uh, let's go with Han- Hannah Hayman.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
City management has gone out of their way to appease cops and their bully union, all while using our money and resources to uphold a system of anti-blackness and racism that the community has very loudly and clearly said we want defunded and abolished. The community are already taking better care of ourselves. Imagine what we could do if the city listened by defunding the police and returning our money. By attempting to define an acceptable level of police violence, the city has put a price on our lives. The city is saying that the black and brown folks that make up this community are worth less to them than throwing millions of dollars to the white supremacist police to brutalize and murder. We absolutely refuse the recommendation that more money go to police trainings and to hire more community officers. The city has been throwing our money down the drain for decades trying to train these murderous cops. All that's gotten us is the most violent cops in the nation. They don't need more training. They need an immediate cut to staffing. The only way to stop police violence is to remove all of the cops that plague our city. The city needs to immediately end all cooperation with a white supremacist federal agency known as ICE. The city is hiding behind SB ten seventy and saying they are forced to turn over our people for deportation by this racist law. The city of Phoenix is the largest city of Arizona and could well afford to refuse compliance and help us take ICE out of our community today. This would save thousands of our family members and set a precedent for Arizona. Instead, city management is full of cowards and racists hiding behind the white supremacist law while they tear apart our community. If the city really wants to show their listening, immediately prioritize tight and release to divert our community from ICE custody and begin non-compliance with ICE. Immediately cut twenty-five percent of patrol officers and demonstrate plans to get another twenty-five percent within the year and demonstrate plans to turn over all police records to be housed at the Office of Accountability and Transparency. These are bare minimum. Prove to us you're capable of listening. Prove to us you're not just here to appease the anti-black, white supremacist, violent Phoenix police. The community needs free housing. We need mental health services. We need clean air and we need to be able to live in our city without being terrorized by killer cops. Abolish the police.
Lisa Fink. Lisa Byman.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, so I had a totally different speech prepared and I was gonna talk about the recommendations, but I'm appalled by some of the things I've heard being said about our police department and I just want to talk about a ride along that I went on. I had the opportunity about a year ago to go on a ride along with the men and women of Phoenix PD and I um was forever changed emotionally. I saw a young woman brutally, brutally beaten, raped, running around her community naked. Not one, nobody in her community would help her. Not one person. I saw Phoenix PD treat this young woman with kindness and respect and just love. I was amazed at what I saw that night. It totally changed my image of policing and what these men and women are out there doing on a daily and night basis. I feel like people need to go on a ride along. If civilians are going to make policies for police departments, they actually need to go out and see what these young, these men and women are doing on a daily basis, what they're having to deal with. It's not easy. They are, they do way more good than the few officers that might do some bad out there. And I can't believe that the city of Phoenix doesn't want their police department. They need more funding. They absolutely need more reser- resources when it comes to nonviolent calls. They need to assist other resources and these calls, many times these nonviolent call, calls turn into violent calls. And we can't be sending ill-equipped mental health or social workers out there without protection. We just can't. There's a lot of crime in this city and it seems to me like we're trying to protect people, we're not looking to protect the law-abiding citizens. We're looking to protect criminals instead of protecting those who deserve to be told and be.
Thank you. Jenny Clark.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Members of the committee and public, my name is Jenny Clark and I'm a citizen of the city of Phoenix. I was born and raised in this great city and because I'm a mother of five young children, I believe a safe, just, dependable and well-funded police department is critical to our community. I have specific concerns with some of the city's recommendations. I don't believe the public would support many of these recommendations if they understood them fully. First, the recommendations propose new community engagement initiatives that do not involve the police. Yet, a multimillion-dollar investment would be needed to fund such initiatives. One can only assume that because of lack of city funds, funds for such a program would come from an already underfunded police budget. Phoenix citizens want a well-funded police department. Second, the recommendations want to upend the current community input model for feedback on police budgeting, which has been successfully used for decades. The language used in the proposed model, which is said to quote empower the people, implies that what has happened successfully for decades was somehow not empowering the people. Phoenix citizens want a well-funded police department. Finally, the recommendations would require officers to report the outcome of every traffic stop, including asking officers to ascertain a person's race and gender when it may not be evident and it may be completely irrelevant to the encounter. Why would the committee want to inject race into every single stop, including educational contact stops? Phoenix citizens want a well-funded police department that promotes policies which bring unity and respect to people. We do not want new policies that divide us. I have many more concerns with the committee recommendations, but in conclusion, these recommendations appear to be attempts to pull funds from our current police department budget since the city itself does not have the funds to support many of these recommendations. Phoenix citizens want a well-funded police department. Thank you.
Anisha Groves.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So yes, we want appropriate crisis intervention services. Um, and the money needs to go to experts who can provide them and not to new police. Um, and even when there's um the intention to make the people objective who might be providing those services, we have to keep in mind that financial and political interests are always tied among institutions and need to make sure that anyone providing those services is not in any way beholden to police or the police union. It's really just a conflict of interest to be giving uh any money uh that ultimately is supporting the police department on things that are intended to be reforms, monitoring, review uh and change. And this goes for all of the initiatives, for example, the tracking and managing of data on police harms. We can't have the police managing that data. Um, they can't remove their conflict of interest um on transparency with that. Furthermore, um, the recommended improvements for transparency are basically bureaucratic and woefully insufficient. Police are supposed to serve the community, so the community should have full access to all information regarding harms to the community by police. The fact that they keep fighting this transparency so hard is further proof that reform can't work. Uh, people keep sighing that the majority of residents do not support defending police. But when people are being murdered by police, I think we need to rethink what democratic process is and what it means to listen to the quote-unquote majority. We live in a system that actively and intentionally disenfranchises people from having a voice by funneling them into the prison industrial complex. White supremacist illusion tells us that those who have the most power are equivalent to the quote-unquote majority, but it's not that simple. Shouldn't the most important voices be those who have to fear for their lives every day? Those who have to have the talk when their children get to an age where they might encounter police?
Thank you. Nicole Garcia.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, well, um, I just heard somebody a couple um speakers ago, said the people of faith don't support our police officers and I completely reject that statement and um, yeah, it's completely false. So first of all, I want to ask why there's so many committees surrounded by transparency over the same thing and I'm going to ask that you stop using taxpaying money to have repeats of the same committee. Um, I do not support reallocating any police department funds to any other program that takes away from our police department. As for community engagement and deciding how this money is spent, if you want true community engagement, find a way to get this on the ballot. For something as important as this, it deserves more than a small group of people deciding the future safety of us and our families. Uh, I'm telling you now, we're not gonna look like LA, Seattle, Minneapolis or New York. It gets personal when you tell me there's a possibility that an officer won't show up at my door when I'm in need and I won't stand for it. I certainly don't want a social worker coming to my door. We are already short-staffed officers in one of the fastest-growing cities in the nation and any more taxpayer money should absolutely go towards increasing our officer headcount, not social worker headcount or pushing an anti-police agenda. Please stop thinking a small group of active activists speaks for one point six uh million residents. Community engagement begins and ends with a citywide vote, period. Not a group of activists trying to dis- dismantle our police department. We can have these meetings, but these activists will not stop until the police department is gone. They have been crystal clear on that. I ask that you stop making things worse for our police officers and at this point, they've been through enough. The uproar recently, we have seen officers injured in the wake of recent riots and several dead across the country. Please stop acting like criminals aren't violent. Police lives matter too. Thank you.
Manuel Saldana.
Hi, uh, I'm in support of the recommendations by this community, by this committee. Uh, transparency brings us closer to the truth of events. In a country of checks and balances, it makes sense that the police are accountable to the community through an outside organization. I heard a caller say that police are judged by edited video, but quick release of body cam footage will repeat injustice to our streets. I agree with the police veteran that the department is understaffed to answer all the calls they get. This is why we need funding to go to new programs that center mental health and are trained for crisis response lives and crisis response like cahoots in Portland, Oregon. Responding to another caller who said that if people don't commit crimes, they won't come into contact with police, it's not true. Police have been called on me for registering people to vote. I was approached as a criminal. In another instance, from recording police, when I lived in Garfield, I was struck with a police, by a police cruiser instead of being treated respectfully. Those police officers needed de-escalated training. I worked as a youth care worker at Tumbleweed's where, here in Phoenix, uh, where I was in many situations where I was threatened, yelled at and never did I get violent. Those clients needed love and resources. Phoenix PD did get violent when protesters were practicing the freedom of speech. A few weeks ago, these were arrested outside my home in Garfield without an explanation. Officers yelled at my guests, were getting on-the-job training and drove off in the back of cruisers with unsecured weapons. Our neighborhood was turned into a war zone and neighbors were hurt. I've been overseas and I've been a social worker and accountability and transparency were crucial. I want to live in a peaceful community, not a war zone, and funding needs to go to housing, healthcare, education and transportation. We need to abolish ICE that is just criminalizing people and Black Lives Matter and I just want and not everybody wants police to be gone, but police have not gotten the job done and we need something else. Um, and yes, thank you. And yes, thank you.
Good evening, this is Robin Mofford, and I am giving my statements regarding the City of Phoenix Review and Implementation Ad-Hoc Committee recommendations. The document is dated July 16, 2020. I do also want to thank everybody for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I do also want to thank all of you for your time invested in this project. As years pass and life's necessities change, it is impractical to believe that any department would not need to make upgrades to bring processes into the current level of need for the communities that they serve. As we work to upgrade the City of Phoenix Police Department, the recommendations should be made based on the greater good of the entire city population, not just for specific demographic or special interest groups. Please make the following considerations. The police department would serve our city more efficiently if the force was increased to 3,800 to match the needs of the population. This would also decrease the employee's stress and decrease officer response time for calls for service. It is inappropriate to request police department to ignore enforcement of any laws. Policy and process changes need to be made on a gradual and consistent basis. With regards to community engagement, please consider funding the police department to further engage the community in the opportunity to be educated on use of force. Community members will have a better understanding why actions are taken during situations. Continue investment into community policing and community programs such as Black Watch, Phoenix Neighborhood Patrol, Citizens Police Academy, et cetera. I wanted to make sure that we also made recommendations that the police department, there's no recommendations in here regarding moral issues or stress-related issues, high-stress job, personal mental management care.
Thank you. Stephen Brittle.
Yeah, yes, thank you. My background is in part federal-level enforcement, so I'm a real believer in the law. The thing that's missing here is we need an ordinance that simply states that police officers who use excessive force would have to be terminated and eligible to be re-employed by the City of Phoenix Police Department. The same thing would apply to applicants. To make sure there are no mistakes over what we mean by excessive force, the ordinance that is created to handle this should give examples, things that, you know, are specifically, no matter who does it or when, is excessive force, like, you know, kicking a handcuffed person in the head and things like that. I have sent all of this, by the way, to the Phoenix City Council members, and, you know, I'm looking for a solution here. Our problem is we have some police who use excessive force, and there doesn't seem to be any political will among the powers that be to stop them. So this would do it. It would cherry-pick out the people who do this. But I've been looking at this for a while. If we can't get it done through the ad hoc committee, then perhaps it'll be done as a citywide initiative. I do political work, but it's the silver bullet that solves the problem. The other thing I'll say is that I don't think that what you're doing is compliant with the Arizona Open Meeting laws. And I've become focused on that issue, on helping some people with another issue, but this process is not accessible, and it's discriminatory in that alone. I have a college degree, and I had a hell of a time getting on, and I had still, only today, found out a way to actually contact this committee with my recommendations, which I'll follow up with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Rosalyn Akins, A-K-I-N-S. Are you there, Ms. Akins?
I am, I am. My name is Rosalyn, and I'm an organizer with Mass Live. My lived experience holds the value. People closest to the problem is closest to the solution, and data is the support and the proof to any narrative. And Phoenix being the most deadliest and the most violent force in the country, the most incarcerated state, should pause and look at that data. According to you, cops keep us safe, and in this, we just heard from someone in this forum state that homicide is increased by 25%, which supports data that more policing does not work if policemen are already in place. The statement made that we have an increased population and we need more officers to cover these areas sounds like slave patrol and police patrol, our areas, to uncover what they deem police patrol, and then they deem misconduct or crime, but you continue to uphold policies that support the illegal hiding of police misconduct. Police unions are divisive, and they help increase police abuse. Mental health for our communities is deficit, and yet I heard someone in this forum declare that we need police mental health. Day one in incarceration increases mental disillusion, and police protection is directly connected to harms and abuses in our community. Training is not effective, and a cultural that is systemically defective, abolishment is the only answer. And if you, more cops only exacerbates these outcomes, and Austin just moved to defund, and it's the largest decrease in action this year, and they placed 50 million to reimagine safety for the community to reimagine that. And so people closest to the solution, again, I remind you, is closest to the answer.
Thank you. Rebecca Davis, or I'm sorry, Rebecca Dennis.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would just like to say that I currently live in District 7, and I grew up in District 5. I would like to start off by saying public safety does not equal police presence. The police are a mode of public safety that has been seen as the saviors of our society. What we are discussing today is the bare minimum of what should have been done and what needs to be done. And even with these recommendations, there are some holes. We do not need more police officers in the community in the form of CAOs to try and build community relationships. We are beyond that point. The trust has been lost and broken for a long time now, and it's deep-seated, and we know exactly what the communities who have been victimized are asking for. They are saying they want full transparency. They want officers who have engaged in violent and aggressive behavior to be held accountable. They want their communities to be reinvested in, not invest in more police. For those who believe in good police officers, transparency should be welcome to prove you are right. I want to address the person who said that. There is no one on this committee that has been involved with law enforcement. You should take the time to look into who's actually sitting on this committee, because you are wrong. I would like to amplify that we do not need the police involved with mental health crisis ever. Someone mentioned that police help our vulnerable communities, and I'd like to offer some insight into a vulnerable situation. Last year, I was put in the position to petition my brother to receive mental health services when my resources were exhausted. The officers who came into this situation aggressively chased and tased my brother, even though I explicitly mentioned how fragile his mental state was and the paranoia that accompanied his psychosis. All those officers did was further the trauma he was experiencing and lied about how they would proceed, which resulted in him being in jail overnight, because policy in Phoenix dictates that if an officer has to tackle a suspect, it's an automatic assault charge. That is not public safety. My brother was extremely vulnerable, and he deserved better. We need to invest in the quality of our public safety and with limited resources. That means divesting funds from the police.
Katie Ayres.
Good evening, council members and committee members. My name is Katie Ayres, and I'm here today on behalf of the Arizona Coalition to Unsexual and Domestic Violence. We are participating in today's meeting in solidarity with our allies and grassroots partner organizations. And as the statewide voice for survivors of sexual and domestic violence, it is important to ensure that the investment in safer and healthier communities includes mental health and human services support, as mentioned in the recommendations, but should be entirely separate from police interventions. As we know, victims are often hesitant to reach out to law enforcement out of fear of not being believed, fear of retaliation from the person that is doing the harm, and fear of further traumatization, especially our folks in Black and Brown communities that are most impacted by police violence. Additionally, we urge Phoenix PD to put an end to the collaboration with ICE. We support community engagement and budgetary allocations in order to ensure the most impacted have a voice in what truly helps heal, as opposed to further traumatization by interactions with violent systems. We support the recommendations for increased transparency and agree that this information must be made public. And thank you for your work on this important issue, but more must be done. It is paramount to ensure that alternative responses are in place to allow survivors and our community to heal. Thank you for your time and consideration in this manner.
Ben Loughlin.
Hi, my name is Ben Loughlin, and I live in District 4. I'm speaking today to express my concerns about these recommendations. As a city, if we should learn anything from the past three months, it's that police reform has failed. Tens of thousands of Phoenix residents have taken to the streets, sent emails, made phone calls, and shown up to council to make it clear that we're done with public safety as it's been done here. The fact that there's no recommendations to deep on the police shows this committee wasn't put together to actually listen to the needs of the community. Did you know that in the last three weeks, Phoenix police have killed two people and injured another person? That all of these people were experiencing some sort of mental health distress? As the impacts of this pandemic continue to grow and impact our neighborhoods, mental health crises are going to grow, are going to rise, and we don't have the infrastructure in place to meet people where they're at. Police aren't behavioral health workers, and we need to stop investing in them like they are. The better training for cops that the city invested in after they killed Michelle Cusso didn't save Muhammad Mahiman. And the better training that they invested in after murdering Muhammad didn't save Casey Wells or Alexander Brown, and it's never going to. The city needs to implement participatory budgeting, especially for our public safety budget. Phoenix residents have the right to make decisions about where our tax dollars go, especially when it comes to a department that has the power to incarcerate, kill, and break up families. We need real decision-making power over our money and our safety. The last thing I want to say is, what about the last three months makes y'all think that hiring more neighborhood cops is something that's aligned with community needs? Like I said earlier, literally tens of thousands of people turned out in the streets and showed up to council meetings to tell council to defund the police. Also, we're in an economic recession. Hiring more cops is financially reckless, and it is only going to get more people incarcerated and killed, because it would be pulling millions of dollars away from vital resources and services that people desperately need as we endure this pandemic. We must stop the plans to hire these new additional cops, and we must halt the practice of hiring new officers to replace those who are retiring, resigning, or getting fired. Thank you.
Reginald Walton.
Good afternoon. Let's see, for years now, we've been coming to council over and over again, asking for the implementation of recommendations. I am, I'm a clergy person who believes that Black Lives Matter, and I was appalled when I heard a person say that people of faith don't believe in the recommendations. I represent the African-American Christian Clergy Coalition. I am the civic engagement chairperson. We represent over 100 churches across Maricopa County. Two things, and I'll be done. One of the things that I keep hearing is that people want to defund the police. Well, the City of Phoenix just gave the city, the city police department a $24 million increase in fiscal year 2020, 2021. How is that asking for defunding of police? And then, secondly, Arizona Central found that Phoenix police mistreats Black and Latino people of color disproportionately. You can go back and find that on their website. We're asking, matter of fact, we're begging, matter of fact, we're demanding that these recommendations not only be, not only be heard, but be finally implemented, because we're tired of our people being brutalized. We're tired of our people being hurt. Listen, you're hearing from a clergy person who is also the co-founder of the Faith and Justice Project. You want to know what the Faith and Justice Project is? We work with Phoenix Police Department. And so Ben Loschner, you've worked with me before, you've heard me before, and so when you make editorials that say that we're just a bunch of wackos and radicals, no, we're not. We're people who are tired of the mess. I yield the rest of my time. Good day.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to question the benefits that the proposal to partner with behavioral health services, if greater involvement is desired with these services. Let the health services organizations propose the changes and also request the funds and the manpower to accomplish the changes. I also believe that the proposal to use participatory budgeting is unnecessary. The city currently has utilized the community input model, and it's been working successfully. If it's not broke, why fix it? I am also of the belief that requiring an officer to attempt to use minimal force to protect the life or to effect an arrest does not consider the lives of the general public or of the officer when minimal force is a prescribed course of action. What is the reason, also, what is the reason officers need to report so extensively on every traffic stop? Should completing this report take priority over answering another call if that should occur? What will more statistics do for us? Has a priority been given to the various types of training all the police employees are being required to have? Surely, the previous police officers have established training based on their experiences, and this is the kind of training that is presently being offered. Are these recommendations all new? I am surprised. The proposals for a staffing study and a review of certain city codes strike me as an attempt to overturn the decisions of law enforcement professionals and the safety of the law-abiding citizen like myself. Thank you.
Christopher Jones.
This COVID shit lasting like.
Christopher Jones, are you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Darlene Vio, and there was, looking at this proposal, there's a lot of components to it. As working in my community, I am involved with my neighborhood. I'm involved with my CAO, and I believe that here in my Washington Park neighborhood, working with the CAO is effective for our department, for our area, I'm sorry. And then maybe what the community or the committee can take from this is maybe having, going out and, or having virtual meetings with the neighborhood organizations and maybe getting ideas. But I know that having our CAOs within our community works for us. And then you have to remember also that we're not officers, and I know that a lot of people go out and say that we don't, we need to defund the police. You know, you got to remember that our officers are out there working overtime, having to, their families having to worry if they're going to come home to their family. So I support my police officers, and I appreciate you all allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Good evening, council. My name is John Justice. I live in District 3. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, and thank you to all Phoenix police officers for keeping my family and I safe. I am asking that the council does not implement the ad hoc committee's recommendations. I believe it could effectively neuter our officers from being able to do their jobs. Our officers' jobs are already dangerous enough. Please do not make their jobs any more difficult by implementing the recommendations of the ad hoc committee. The citizens of Phoenix do not want their city to be like that of Oregon, Seattle, Washington, or New York City. We need more officers on the street, not less. We do not need to take their tools and ability to do any of their jobs effectively away from them. Phoenix is a great place to live because of our police department. We need to support our officers and keep Phoenix a great place to live and raise a family. Reallocating money is defunding our great police department. Please do not do that. This city is a place of law and order. Let's keep it that way. Let's keep it that way. The ad hoc committee's recommendations are not supported by the majority of our citizens. Let's take this to the entire city for a vote. If we fail to support our police, we will all be left to the wolves lying in wait in the dark of night for us. Again, thank you for your time.
Georgia Spillers. Barbara Heller.
Yes.
We can hear you. Please go ahead. Ms. Heller, we heard you a minute ago. Please go ahead. Kaye Thomas.
Oh.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes, oh.
Please go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, first off, I want to say that I'm an African-American woman. I live in District Eight. It is, I am very, very disappointed with Carlos Garcia, our city council member, who does not care about public safety. Neither does the mayor. And I'm really appalled by a lot of these comments here. I am a crime victim, and I'm actually mixed African-American and Hispanic, and I support police. So does my entire church that is mostly African-American. I have about 30 neighbors that don't have internet. They don't have a computer. Someone helped me set this up. But I do want to say that the only people that don't want police are criminals. We only have four detectives in crimes against, in missing children, excuse me, in missing children, and only a couple more in crimes against children. So, if these people don't want police, and they are supporting pedophiles and sex trafficking, and, you know, if you don't break the law, then you're not going to really have any problems. So, it seems to me like most of these people are just criminals and breaking the law, and they don't care. But we're below 2008 levels with police. We are so short police. My neighbor, who is 83 years old, was assaulted. It's very difficult to get police. And now, all these police haters downtown have all the police tied up at the protest. And that's not really fair. But we need to increase ICE presence. Most of the people that are committing crimes have been our legals that have been hit, got arrested. And, you know, I don't know what they're talking about with.
Thank you. Roland Harris.
Hello?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Yeah, how are you doing today? My name is Roland Harris. I'm the father of Jacob Harris. He was murdered by the Phoenix Police Department on January 11, 2019. The thing I didn't see that I like to see in Apollo.
Sir, are you still there?
Bringing suspects or people in the back. I don't know how they're held or not held at the same accountability as us as citizens. If us as a citizen shoot someone in the back, we're talking murder. So, that's one of the main concerns I have on that is there was no mention of any police officers that shoot people in the back. And as far as defunding the police department, only portion I think that we should defund is the Special Assignment Shooting Unit. They make up about 1% of the Phoenix Police Department, but yet are responsible for over 80% of law police involved shootings and killings by the Phoenix Police Department. That's something that the committee should look into. And as far as expunging records, they should not be expunged. And as far as lawsuits, I feel that police union and police retirement funds should go to paying funds for lawsuits and not for citizens to have to pay for those lawsuits. But if the city council continues to allow police officers out there killing people to still be on patrol, then that's something that the city council should also be held liable for as well, as well as the chief of police. The officers involved in my son's shooting, between the two of them, I killed over five unarmed suspects.
Thank you. Susan Lombardi. Linda Spillers. Richard Moore. Mr. Moore, are you there?
Yeah, hi. Are you reading me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to remind you all that the term recidivism does not only apply to quote-unquote criminals. It also applies to the police as well. Quote-unquote criminals in this state are given a permanent blight on their record for the rest of their lives, which poses the question, why are we erasing officers' records? This is why we have people like Philip Brailsford, who murdered Daniel Shaver in cold blood on camera. This is why we have people like Mohamed Mahiyan, Ryan Whitaker, who are no longer on this earth. This is why we have people like Jason Gillespie, who brutalized a woman who called in before me, who, by the way, I commend her for her courage. We don't need more CAOs. To respond to the lieutenant that called in who wants more CAOs, I witnessed three separate occasions in the past month where I've seen police officers harassing homeless people on the street. I've seen two people die of heat stroke. We're talking about one of the most deadly and deplorable departments in the country. On January 24, 2016, I had two officers draw their service weapons on me on my front porch for no reason, other than they were looking for a quote-unquote suspect. No report was filed. Instead, the officers laughed and joked about it, how I could have been killed. So, this department doesn't deserve a dime. I yield my time.
Jamie Bunnell.
...intention, ignoring the voices of the people most victimized by police. Yes, we need investment in mental health services, but not in a way that covertly splits that money into the hands of the police department. To the policy and training recommendations, no. Reform has historically proven to be a false promise that only serves to soothe the social conscience, but we will not be pacified. We need to move funds to programs that actually ensure that people in this city can live with dignity and security. There is nothing ambiguous about the impotence of our police. We don't need to waste money on another report. And to suggest that our money should go to hiring more cops while people across this city are dying, not only from police violence, but from lack of access to basic resources, gasoline on fire. Shameless recklessness goes with our money and with our lives. I guess I appreciate the opportunity to speak, but it means nothing if you still aren't listening. People are concerned about crime, okay. Crime is crisis. Address the root causes of crisis instead of criminalizing the same people that you continue to starve and invest in community. Your ride along, this police union pandering is costing us our lives. You've my time, too.
Valerie Hernandez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
All right. My name is Valerie Hernandez. I am 27 years old. I live in Tempe, Arizona. I am a Tempe citizen and resident. I was born and raised in Phoenix, Arizona. I work in the ITC Department in McDot. I wanted to share a mental health crisis and the response that I received from the Gilbert Police Department in 2018. On October 23, 2018, Valerie Hernandez, myself, was taken into custody after police received a call for service of a female subject attempting to gain access to vehicles in listed area. Upon police arrival, Valerie was identified and contacted in the bed of a truck that she did not own nor have permission to be in. Valerie was quote-unquote fixing the truck and had removed several items from the truck's bed. During the course of the investigation, it was also found Valerie had removed a laptop from another vehicle. All items taken were returned to their rightful owners, and Valerie admitted post-morandum to gaining entry into both vehicles and taking items. Valerie was arrested for the above charges and was taken to GCU-HF, where she was processed and booking. I bring this up because this was the first time I was ever arrested. I've not gotten arrested before. I'm not a criminal. I'm a good kid. I have a bachelor's degree in computer science. I've always been called a goody-two-shoe. And the way that the first police officer responded Hogan was rude, condescending, disrespectful. Joseph Larkin was understanding, compassionate. I needed to go to the hospital, and I needed mental health care, and I did not receive that. I went to jail, and I was not given my medication. And we need mental health services, and we need them now. Things need to change.
Thank you. Denise Bryan.
Okay, so, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Okay, so, I have listened all evening, and I have written something out, but I'm going to have to change it. So, first of all, our officers need to be respected as human beings, and they are, first of all, parents, children of somebody. They are somebody's spouse, and they also have to answer to themselves. So, by legislating or making some kind of rule for them, maybe a little bit beyond what needs to be necessary. We're overlooking the fact that these individuals as human beings are overworked. They are expected to be more than just the person behind a badge of the law, and they are expected to be enforcing and evaluating those laws. And those laws are created by legislatures. Their job is to enforce those laws. However, their job is not to be your babysitter. Our, I say your, pardon me, our babysitter is not, and their job is not to be our counselor. It's not to be our counselor in any way. They're, however, they're being accountable for doing that. It seems to me that the ones who are complaining the most are the ones that have the highest crime rate, where they're not taking on their personal responsibility. We are creating, by doing any kind of transparency, we're creating a public court, which will put these persons, our officers, in jeopardy. Let me tell you, I love my community action officer. I love the fact that if I have an issue in my community, that he will be there or he will address the issue in my community.
Thank you. So, that is the last of the people that I have on my sheet to call. We will still have the draft recommendations up for public comment till August 25, so five more days. We'll swing back to see if there are any additional comments from the co-chairs at this point in time.
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone, both the committee and everyone who spoke today. I don't know, Councilwoman Williams, do you have any comments?
I do. I want to thank everyone. I think I have an echo. Sorry. And all the callers. I thought it was very interesting, informative, and I appreciate the public. I also want to thank Milton and wish him a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
It's a heck of a night to spend celebrating at this meeting. But thank you for all the work you've done.
Thank you very much. So, I'll go over once again how things move forward. So, as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting, a number of people have already submitted written comments. Those comments have been shared with the ad hoc members. Some of it was just transmitted today, so they'll need some days to go through it. The general public has five more days in which to submit online comments, and then the ad hoc committee will come back together for an additional meeting to look over the draft recommendations to determine if any of them need to be modified, new ones added, any kind of changes. And then ultimately, a written final report will be forwarded to the mayor for mayor and council consideration. Thank you all for participating this evening. Mr. Barrow, you have anything? So, I guess we'll adjourn at this point. Thank you very much.